All right. Thank you for your patience with our late start. We went a little over in our other meeting. I welcome you and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is May, or sorry, May. It is April 4th, 2023, and we are starting at 6:39 PM. I will note that all members of the council are present. At the dais, we have Councilman Fitziamanu, Councilman Whitestone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hoon, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Norfelt, and we're joined by our city manager, Mr. Pyle. And our city recorder, Ms. Kamik, is joining us virtually. Our opening ceremony will be by Councilmember Norfelt. We'll turn the time to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, everyone, please rise with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to our, I'll turn the time to the council for our approval of the minutes from March 28th, 2023. Any discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 28th.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that is approved. We now have a proclamation recognizing the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I will turn the time over to Councilman Whitestone for that proclamation or recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. "A proclamation recognizing the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas the children of West Valley City are the future of our state's success and investing in their general welfare, safety, and livelihood are of utmost priority. And all children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment to assure they reach their full potential as they grow and develop. And the protection of children and strengthening of families is of concern and responsibility of all West Valley City citizens because of the wellness of children affects our lives and now and will continue to affect us in the future. And there were hundreds of cases of child abuse in West Valley City last year, each of which impact an entire family and affect the community as a whole. And child abuse respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, or geographic boundaries. And all citizens of West Valley City need to become more aware of child abuse and its prevention within their respective communities and actively encourage and support parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And preventing child abuse requires each member of the community to be attentive to the problems of families around them and commit to do everything they can to help. Now therefore, we, as we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, Utah, do hereby proclaim and recognize April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we call upon all our citizens to renew their commitment to be educated on the impact of child abuse and join in working for its prevention within our community."
Thank you. We were supposed to have a time to go out and place the pinwheels in the flowerbed out front, but because we can't find that due to snow, we will do that in the future. But this is a very important issue, and so we wanted to follow up with the proclamation. All right, we will now turn to our public, our comment period. We will now have public comment. Comment period is limited to 30 minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to five minutes. And we have a countdown clock for you. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you did not sign up, please give us your name and address at the time you come to the mic. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No one addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once during the comment period. And speakers should not expect a response from the mayor, council, or staff. They will have an opportunity to address the concerns if needed during the 30-minute period. So we'll go to Speaker One.
Hi, how are you guys?
We're doing well, thank you. And your name is?
Name's Guy Webb. I'm here to talk to you guys about your Muni cat deterrent, the program you guys are using. A year ago, I was bit by a cat that come chasing my cats in the house. Lately, I've had this same problem when I ask for help by our animal control, I get this when I talk to him in person. And this, what I'm talking about is how to deter a cat from coming in a house. There's nothing on this page that'll deter a cat from coming in somebody's house. There's also nothing on this page that'll deter a cat from biting somebody. My biggest problem is this, you're willing to pick up the cats if I catch them. You're willing to take them and neuter them. You're willing to take them to spay them, check them out for good health, and turn them back to the community. I don't see that being a good program at all, do you? Like I said, I was bit a year ago. This ain't happened to me again. Unless it could happen to any of the small children that are in my house. And then we just talk about prevention of children. What about stray cats? I'd like to know what we can really do about this program before I have to go to the governor, which is my next step. And I'm going to go to the TVs. I would really like to have someone sit down with me one day and talk to me about this program. It's ridiculous. Yeah, I understand where I'm coming from, right? That's what I thought. All right. My next step will be to get Governor of Utah. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Two?
Hello, Mayor Lee, councilmembers. So, Councilmember Whitestone said it himself. Our children are our future. I come here as a coach of the youth fast pitch softball. I'm sorry, having to read off mostly what I scripted here. All sports are important. However, today, I would like to discuss specifically girls' fast pitch softball. As a representative of the local recreational league, it has become increasingly more difficult to procure locations for the hundreds of girls that we represent this, this year, somewhere to practice. As a parent of three beautiful daughters, I find it important to teach them the importance of commitment, responsibility, good sportsmanship, and teamwork. With increasing lack of public facilities for residents of West Valley, as well as our neighbors in Magna, Taylorsville, West Valley, Sandy, as well as Draper, all of which I have girls that come and play for our city in order to play, learn, and fall in love with the sport of girls' fast pitch. I feel that we're currently at risk of fewer places for our children to go and learn these important lessons in life. So I would implore each and every one of you to take a look in a way that we can continue to support West Valley Fast Pitch Softball. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you. Speaker Three?
Hey, Mike Markham. If you're all wondering about the difference between landscape rock and gravel, you can go to the website for Asphalt Materials, Inc. They are at 80th South and 13th West. You can go there and buy. First, you can pick it out online, and you can take a trailer or they will deliver it. You can pick out all kinds of different colored gravel even. You can get landscape rocks from river rocks to bigger rocks. I prefer the bigger rocks because I can use my blower to get the leaves out of the, out of the rocks, and I don't blow the, and I don't blow the rocks out. Sometimes I will, but I can, they're very easily picked up. And you can go from little rocks, little river rocks, to big river rocks. They've got them by size, two inch, three inch, four inch, whatever you want to get and put in there. So there is a difference between gravel and landscape rock. Give you a perfect example of gravel. The place that, next to me, that you've allowed to take 40% of their front yard and turn it into a parking lot. They've just put gravel down, no cloth, no border. One of their cars got stuck in it this morning and managed to throw that gravel all over the sidewalk. Now, do you want to ask me if they cleaned it up? No, they didn't. Okay? You know, I don't know. You know, I don't know how hard it is to talk about for people to use their imagination in, in, in landscape rocks. You know, you drive around the city. You know, you go places, they've got boulders and parking strips in the city to keep the homeless from pitching their tents there. You know, I'm not saying we need to go that big, but you could go to something other than gravel. Gravel's cheap, yeah. I use it up in Camas. It's good for the road. I'm, you know, I'm sure Public Works uses it a time or two, but we gotta, you know, there has to be a difference. But then on the other hand, if we're allowing designer dirt, I don't know where we ended up on that as something being allowed. You know, I, somebody would have to show me where you can go by designer dirt. You know, does it come with a little Tommy flag on some of the spots or Calvin Klein designer dirt? Or do you rake your designer dirt one way and then you go the, another direction to get that designer dirt? I don't know the difference between designer dirt. Because I'm not very smart. And then another thing I'm confused about, we were talking about parking in there. I had a company out of West Valley come and take out a giant tree and a branch out of my backyard. They came with a crane, parked it out in the cul-de-sac. That way, they could lift giant portions of the tree out at a time. Then to get the big limb out of my backyard, they went over my house and lifted it back over the fence. So this outfit was in the cul-de-sac doing this, the crane, for maybe two hours. Then we had the guys that were there with the chainsaws, cutting the branches up in manageable sizes, feeding them into a mulcher and blowing them into a, the truck that hauls the mulch away. Then we had a personal truck there for the guys to get there to work in. So would all of those cars, the crane, all of the trucks, everything be cited for being there? Because they were there, the crane was there for probably two hours. The cleanup was probably three, four hours. So would they be cited? Or it's like I said once before, we, you know, we've got these people out there you know, are parking and code enforcement and stuff. I think there has to be partly common sense in this. You know, if there's a, if there's a truck and a trailer parked in my front yard, and you can hear the lawn mowers and stuff going, they're working for me. They're not, they're not parking there forever. What if R.C. Willy pulls up in my front yard because they can't get in the driveway? And they're driving a semi with a bobtail. You know, it's going to take them a while to get everything out and move it in. I don't, you know, we, there has to be some common sense within these people that see when it comes to the parking issues. I mean, there are some things that are cut and dry, and there are other things that are common sense issues. So if we could work towards some things with some common sense issues, that would be great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Speaker Four?
Jim Vissok, Mike, if somebody pulls up in your front yard, I'm going to report it. So we don't want to park in your front yard.
But I know what you meant. Sorry.
A semi, speaking of semis, there's one on the corner of 41 and 5,400. That's been parked there since August. It's in a side backyard. Parking enforcement says it's a non-commercial vehicle. So it's under the same category as an RV. I mean, not parking, sorry, code enforcement, not parking, sorry. It oversees the weight limit. It's a standard semi cab, double wheels in the back. It beats the, the weight limit. Every single day I report it, they automatically close it. This is not the only violation on that property, by the way. It's parked on a surface that's not four inches. It has weeds growing. There's outside storage. There's a tarp over a boat, which is outside storage. Because you can't put a tarp over a boat. They have a fence that's falling down. The code enforcement employee doesn't want to enforce the code enforcement. They're using what you guys are doing right now as an excuse not to do their job. Like I said, this was reported back in August. I have the emails of corresponding back and forth, and I have all the reports. I save all that stuff. The lawnmowers that I talked about last week, that was reported almost three years ago. This week, got a message back and that there's a case pending, but all they can do is send out a courtesy notice on that. And the response from the code enforcement employees, you know why, to me, a little bit more explicit to the resident that reported it. But the ordinance is that you guys are changing, isn't going to change somebody running a lawnmower business, a washing machine business out at their house. It isn't going to change that. They can still enforce ordinances instead of using you guys as an excuse not to do their job. And that's what's happening right now. Trailer's parked on the street, was brought up in the meeting over there. That's already being enforced. You call parking, they will come out and ticket it. Pretty simple thing. Yard sale, what about a yard sale permit? So then the resident will know when they apply for that permit. Okay, I can only have three after that of what all the rules are going to be. Just a suggestion. And then on the scheduling of code enforcement employees. We were told last week, yes, they work on the weekends. They don't, there's one on call and maybe a supervisor in there. The fix is a rotating schedule. Take away this Monday through Thursday, seven to four. Have one week where they're working Wednesday or Thursday through Sunday, driving their normal shift. That means every nine weeks, that area would be covered. They're working their area, their normal job. It would be covered. They would see the semis out there, the parking. And if it's a rotating shift, the residents aren't going to know, like when you call parking or code enforcement. I'm only here from XXX. Oh, that tells me when they're not there, I can do my violations. So a rotating schedule, once again, is a simple fix, easy to do, and it would be one time every nine weeks that they would have to work a weekend. That's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Was there anyone else that wished to speak? Please come and give us your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Wade, 3489 Ashby Cove in West Valley. This isn't on the agenda for either the study meeting or this meeting, but I've been interested to learn, and I'm reading a statement that I prepared. So if it sounds a little staged, it is. I've been interested to learn of the discussion to change the form of government in West Valley City. It's definitely a valid and helpful item for raising civics awareness. And I've dealt with civics awareness issues before. However, I'm concerned that the council has been discussing a resolution to place that item on the 2023 ballot when there seems to have been so little awareness, information, or public notice of the potential for a shift that can affect fundamental elements in our city's governance. Regardless of a comment from one council member in a study meeting, there seems no broad concern or movement among West Valley City residents for a change like that. Also, unless a person were aware of the February 7th study meeting item or read about it mixed in the ads on, I think, pages 10 and 11 in the West Valley City Journal, they might not likely know about the discussion and particularly the level of consideration the council seems to be giving to a ballot resolution. And, and I have to stop at this point. I know I might have missed some information. So this isn't to criticize things that, I mean, I, I know I've got my role too. When I saw the topic come up in a March study meeting, I realized I needed to do research past, to research past agendas to understand what I might have missed at meetings and in public information on the city website and social media. What I saw was that I don't think I actually missed anything. I needed to study the council's information more extensively, but there doesn't seem to have been any extra information, notice, or invitation to the public about contrasting forms of city government. So I am so grateful for city council members' responsible research to understand the details and intricacies of information outlined in that February 7th presentation. But West Valley City residents are generally still unaware. The video of that meeting has fewer than 100 views. People trust and rely on well-publicized open meetings with focus on such an important topic to learn important and to learn information and understand effects of change. I believe they're unaware of the various forms of government, contrasts, pros and cons, but they are also unaware of the change process that they may have to vote, that may, they might have to vote on before them within the year. Even the council's discussion or resolution step is one which people will recognize the lawns in open focused meetings. So even that process of their understanding to come to a meeting like this and say, comment on that resolution, I think is something they'd really like to be, I know I would, be involved in. After reviewing the February 7th study meeting discussion again, I noted numerous points and questions among council members, points and questions I think West Valley City residents would be interested in. So I requested the council take some additional steps to inform and get input from residents before taking any further steps toward a ballot resolution. Excuse me. Please organize public meetings for presenting information, at least one in each city council district, and with all dates and locations broadly publicized, so residents can plan to participate. Prepare clear presentations about the current form of West Valley City government and other possible forms. Prepare protocol materials so people understand how to actually conduct public discussion, because there's some question about that these days. Input and summary reports on what West Valley City residents understand, understand and want in our form of government. Design information materials for distribution in neighborhoods and to businesses mailed to homes and publicized so residents are well aware of their role in the process to supply informed comments to the council if it discusses a ballot resolution. And create surveys to assess what residents understand about the current form and other forms of city government, contrasts in policy decision-making, and effects on governance, including staff structures and tax implications. I admire the choice made by the mayor and each member of our city council to serve. And I know you want to represent the people in our districts and the whole city and make decisions in their best interest. From the, thank you.
All right. Was there anyone else that we wished to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? And I don't see anyone online, so we will close the public portion and turn the time over to the city manager. Did you have any comments?
One quick one, ma'am. As you all know, from time to time, the various ratings agencies, Standard and Poor's, Fitch, they will come and speak with us, examine, do what they do, or do what they call an evaluation of the city for its financial strength, and they reaffirm or change what our bond ratings are. There's no fixed schedule to this. They kind of have a general, like, you know, every couple of years, or if there's something specific going on with a particular piece of bond, bonding request for debt service. So anyway, we recently had Fitch Ratings was conducting one of these reviews, and they just came out with their report here as of a couple of days ago. And I thought it was interesting in that for the first time in 25 years that I've been here, and I don't think it ever happened before that, for a couple of what they call key ratings drivers, they rated the city's financial status as AAA, which we've never had before. So I thought I'd just read really quickly a couple of those comments, and I promise it won't be by paragraph. It'll be literally a couple of sentences, but those key rating drivers are under subjects such as revenue framework, expenditure framework, long-term liability burden, and operating performance, among others, longer. The two that we got the AAA rating in were long-term liability burden and operating performance. The long-term, a couple of comments, "Long-term liabilities are low at 4.8% of personal income, close to three-fourths. Long-term liability burden is direct debt." Under operating performance, it said, "The city has superior gap closing capacity as evidenced by strong, continued strong general fund balances that can help offset revenue declines during a downturn." One other commentary, which, there we go, right there. Analytical conclusion, the city's overall rating is still triple, or sorry, double A capital, which they reaffirmed. It wasn't a change. They said, "This reflects the highest level of financial resilience, strong revenue control, solid expenditure flexibility, and low long-term liabilities." That's probably good enough. We have a full report that, that will distribute to the council that they can read at their leisure, but I just thought that was a, a moment warranting mention. We've never had that before. That's something we've striven for, for a long time, and to see it happen now, it's been gratifying. So I thought we'd let you know.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. I'll now turn it to the council for any comments.
Mayor, I just had a comment with regards to the, the potential of the change of form of government, the comments were made. And I will completely agree about all the tools that were mentioned about outreach. And I would like to see that continue to happen. I would love to hear from as many residents, and that includes an education process, because like what was mentioned, most folks probably don't understand the differences in forms of government. And I have a quarterly newsletter that I email out to my district. I have 750-something emails that I send it out to. And I threw in a poll, this, I sent out a newsletter last Friday, and I threw in a poll, and the results are still coming in, but it's been a little bit eye-opening for me to see, to put that in there. I did, you know, I did put pros and cons of each different types of form of government, tried to provide some education, but I did want to see what the general temperature was on that topic. So I appreciate those comments.
Hey, thank you. Yes.
I have one, Mayor. Thank you. First one is, I would love to see Leon Morris maybe to take a couple of minutes after our meeting here. And so this is the gentleman right here. He mentioned about the cat matter. First one, and second one, maybe the former government go along with the council member, West Stone, right there. Is there any way the city can put on a website or something can help them out, let them know kind of awareness, we are doing that, and we are thinking doing that. We ask them to come and to basically participate or to have any question. Is that, as the city can do something like put on a website or the small video clip about that we are trying to do.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments? Yep.
Just quickly, kudos to our professional staff for getting that rating. We, we appreciate it, and we appreciate all the professional staff does.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to our public hearing. We'll now accept public input regarding our 2223 budget opening. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. Quarterly throughout the year, we conduct a budget opening to consider rollovers of projects, revenues that have come in in the forms of grants and other distributions, and then also other items that have arisen during the year for expenditure. And this is the third one of those for the year that we've looked at. There are also, I might mention, one or two of these items in each of the other city entity budgets, which she'll be considering later. But councils had a week previous to look at this, seems like a little bit of time just from distribution of information. But councils had a week previous to look at this, seems like a little bit of time just from distribution of information, but we are bringing that for you tonight for your consideration. And yes, of course, we always hold and are required to hold a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now open the public hearing. Is there one in the audience that would like to address this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and turn the action item, which is ordinance 23-08, to the council for discussion or a motion.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance 23-08.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I'm just going to make one comment. I requested some reinformation that we didn't get until like 4 o'clock today, so I'll just be voting no, just because the information wasn't provided soon enough, and that's just my explanation.
For me, ma'am, and I actually will have to take the blame for that. I had asked for a couple of changes, one of which was made, and then I wanted to further change like at the end of last week, and I got distracted and forgot to send it back again. So we did get it completed this afternoon. I could run through it if you'd like, but
No, that's okay. I'll ask for the extra information later.
Okay.
So thank you. All right, turn it to the council. We had a motion and a second, so Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Pittis Semenu?
Hi.
Councilman West Stone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Lang?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will now go to resolution, or application, ZT1 2023, which is amendment to our zoning ordinance, and I'll turn the time to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This public hearing would be for the purpose of taking public comment to address possible changes to our land use regulations. The council has had long and detailed discussion about the definition and enforcement of commercial vehicles within the city, both on public and private property.
Thank you. All right, any comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is now open if anyone would like to come speak on this issue. Yep, just come to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
Robert Olson, 41, Andy West, Paragon Way. One of the things that I have noticed with parking enforcement that they have, will be addressing with some of these proposed changes that will be coming with this new ordinance. I foresee parking getting a lot of questions. Why am I supposed to park my commercial trucks from the business I run out of my home? And from what I understand, the study meeting that they are going to be trying to match the weight limit for the driveway to match that of the street. I would encourage the council to increase the weight limit for the driveways, that way these businesses that are run out of their home do have a place that they can keep their vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we had another request?
Jim Bissack, I encourage you guys to vote on this with the changes that were talked about in the study meeting. I think this might clear up some of the confusion and maybe get that semi moved. Thank you.
Was there anyone else that wished to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public comment period, and I will turn this action item, which is ordinance 23-09, to the council for comments or a motion.
I would move to approve ordinance 23-09.
The amendments we talked about?
Yes. I would move to approve ordinance 2309 with the changes that were discussed in our study meeting, which are being drafted right now.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman West Stone?
Yes.
Councilman Pittis Semenu?
Hi.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will now turn to ordinance 23-10. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. So in accordance with and sort of parallel to the last item, which addresses changes in Title VII, this ordinance change addresses changes in Chapter 22 that would also have to do with similar subjects for civil traffic enforcement and parking. If my time's done, I have to go. Within the city, and there are a number of different areas this addresses, including increasing the fines for repeat offenders, creating affirmative defenses to prohibition for parking recreational vehicles. I know I'm kind of, sounds a little bureaucratic, but there was much discussion about that, and then also, again, standardizing the definition of commercial vehicles.
Okay, thank you. We'll now turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
A motion to approve ordinance 23-10.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Wait, did we have amendments to this one as well?
Yeah, with amendments.
I'll amend my motion to include the amendments that were discussed at the study meeting.
And I'll resubmit in my second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Norfeld. We will now turn it to Ms. Kamic for a roll call vote.
Councilman Pittis Semenu?
Hi.
Councilman West Stone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Hi.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will now turn to Resolution 23-40. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would authorize the purchase of a Kubota utility vehicle from Bonneville Equipment Company in the amount of not to exceed $40,000 for use of snow, or for snow removal and general maintenance around City Hall and Fairborn Station.
Okay, thank you. And as a side note, this equipment won't even be here until next season, right?
That's correct.
Because of the supply chain, we're ordering early, so we can have it by next year. Okay, thank you. I will now turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 23-40.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Pittis Semenu?
Hi.
Councilman West Stone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Hi.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. We will now turn to Resolution 23-41. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would authorize the execution of a public highway at-grade crossing agreement between ourselves, Union Pacific Railroad Company, and Kearns Metro Township, and this would allow for the reconstruction and widening of the railroad crossing on 47 South near 5550 West, which is necessary for the completion and and smooth execution of our 4,700 South reconstruction project.
Okay, thank you. Now turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 23-41.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman West Stone?
Yes.
Councilman Pittis Semenu?
Hi.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. On our consent agenda, we have one Resolution 23-42, which is just one of our warranty deeds and temporary construction easements, which are pretty common. I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve the item on the consent agenda, Resolution 2342.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Hi.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman West Stone?
Yes.
Councilman Pittis Semenu?
Hi.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We do not have need for a closed session. Just as a heads up, we have three other meetings as a commission after this meeting, so we will stay and do these three extra meetings. And then for this meeting, we just have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned.
Call to order. The West Valley City Development Agency, and today's Tuesday, April 4, 2023, as, let me see, the time, 7:18 PM, and we are in a public hearing right now, room. The call to order is, every council member is here, including the mayor. Land is here too. Opening ceremony, the council member, Lars Norfeld, has done it earlier. Approval of minutes, we have January 3, 2023, the annual meeting, and send it over to the council for a motion and an action.
Move to approve those minutes.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second, so all favors of this motion, please say aye.
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 Motion passing unanimously. Item number five, the report of the chief executive officer, city manager, have anything to say tonight?
No report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The last item right here we have, is actually is the second last, is the public hearings we have. Just recently, you heard that in a public hearing tonight about the budgets 2022 and 2023, and I will turn over to our city manager.
Thank you, sir. We have one item on the budget opening, and that's the only business tonight. This would reflect the transfer of property from the RDA to the city. The value of the property is $3.266 million. It's not a cash transaction of any kind, but merely this transfer.
Okay, thank you, and I will open the public hearing right now. So anyone who wants to speak with this budget resolution 23-01, and just come up to microphone and speaks to us. None? So I will close the public hearing. I will send it over to our council and for a motion, action, or accent.
Move to approve Resolution 23-01.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, have a second, so send over to the city recorder, Nico Kamat, please. Nico? You still there?
Can you hear me?
No, now, now we, yeah, now we do.
Sorry. Mr. Pittis Semenu?
Hi.
Mr. West Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
Chairman Hune?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. So we are adjourned. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we are adjourned.
Thank you. I call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Housing Authority. Acknowledge Vice Chair Don Christensen. Here, we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from January 3, and I'll send that to the council.
I move for approval of such minutes.
Second.
Properly before us, all in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those are approved and received. Do we have a report from Mr. Pyle?
No, sir, thanks.
Thank you. Then we'll move to our public hearing regarding public input here for the opening of the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget for the housing authority. To you, Mr. Pyle, to introduce, please.
Thank you. Yes, there's one item as well in this budget opening. It reflects $725,000 of additional funding that the federal government through HUD has allocated to us, which would be spent in the same type of programs that the housing authority administers now.
With that introduction, I will open the public hearing for input. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing then and send it back to the council for motion. I move for approval of Resolution 23-01.
Second.
It's properly before us. Can we have the, Nicole, can you go ahead and call the roll call, please?
Mr. West Stone?[1603.81]